Welcome. I'd like to call this February 8th, 2016 council meeting in order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
What a great tree.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh, my seat. Sorry.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of January 25th, 2016, as submitted and prepared by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet again in two weeks, the Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colzar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a meeting that is scheduled on Thursday, February 25th at 5:30 PM. I'll be downstairs here at City Hall in the multipurpose room. Thank you.
Thank you. Publics Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held, but we will be meeting in March.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing scheduled at this time, but I'm looking to schedule a meeting in March also.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled this time and nothing to report.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and it looks like March is going to be a busy month.
Okay. Reports, requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have a denim to RCA 16002, RFPs for scanning project from municipal court, 1620 budget amendments, 1621 MCRC Senior Activities Coordinator Position addition, 1622 fiscal year 2014 CHIP grant Wadsworth reimbursement, 1623 expenditure over $15,000 for software solutions for the Finance Department, 1624 easements for West Smith Reconstruction, 1625 expenditure over $15,000 for Lake County Sewer Street Department, and 1626 payment over $3,000 to Walter Haverfield. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple updates. Working America is a group that's going to be canvassing in the city. They're a legislative and political advocacy as well as educational canvassing of residential areas in the city. It started in January and is likely to go through November election cycle. The times of the canvassing per the group are 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekends. These activities are constitutionally protected under the First Amendment and do not require these persons to register with the city for solicitor's permit or follow our solicitors' regulations as they are not selling anything. Working America is a not-for-profit 501(c)(5) labor organization affiliated with the AFL-CIO. This coming weekend, February 12th through 15th, is the Medina Ice Festival. Ice sculptures will be supported by the local businesses, and it's always a large draw for the downtown, which supports our local businesses as well. The American Heart Association selected our Healthy Medina program along with Medina Hospital for their Gold Fit Friendly Work Site as well as Community Innovation Award. As you know, the Healthy Medina program is a great collaboration with the City of Medina, Medina Hospital, and the community at large. There's going to be a public meeting with the Ohio EPA to discuss the proposed Wadsworth compressor station. The meeting will be Tuesday, February 16th at 6:00 PM at the Cloverleaf Elementary School, and that's located at 8337 Friendsville Road in Seville. And then last but not least, I'd like to invite up from the Medina Community Band Conductor Marcus Nyman and the Medina Community Band Association President, Dr. Thomas Kennett, for a proclamation for being nationally recognized. The proclamation reads, City of Medina proclamation, "Whereas the Medina Community Band has been recognized by the John Philip Sousa Foundation for its historic importance and impact on the present-day community band effort with a Sudler Silver Scroll Historic Certificate for 2015. And whereas this award, which is the highest award for community bands in America, recognizes community bands that have been in existence for more than 100 years, as well as having played a significant and leading role in the cultural and musical environment in our community. Whereas the community is very fortunate to have a talented band of dedicated volunteers who provide music to the greater Medina area in a variety of venues. And now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby congratulate the Medina Community Band on receiving such a prestigious award, and it's dated today with the city seal affixed heretofore." I'd like to present that to you, sir.
Marcus.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, all of you. We are extremely honored to have this award. It shows what the community has said for a long time, that we are your community band, and we perform for you. And the service we perform for this community is now recognized nationally. The other performing groups in the past that have received this award, like Medina Community Band, have been existence for a long time and are part of the fabric of this community. I want to thank Dennis, President, for your support, and we will hope that we can do it for another 100 years or so. It's an honor to be the conductor of the band. It's an honor to work with the people, and we're very proud to be with you.
On behalf of the Medina Community Band Association, I would like to thank Mayor Hanwell and the City Council for honoring us for having received this wonderful award. I would also like to recognize all of our board members who are here and ask them to please stand. These are the people who are all members of the band, playing members of the band, and they provide the sport for the band and manage the operations of the band. I especially would like to recognize John Connors, who's there, who gave a great deal of his time in assisting Marcus to prepare the application for this award. Thank you for everyone, and have to also mention that without Marcus, who has conducted this band for 43 years and built it to what it is today, we would not have received this award. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, and that is an honor well deserved. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate the band on a well-deserved award as someone who's attended the band concerts for 40 years here. My predecessor in this job by two generations is a member of the band, and unfortunately, my lack of musical ability has not allowed me to continue that tradition, but I do appreciate the work they do. I have a few things that are on the agenda later that I'll comment when we get to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Mr. Nyman was the band director when I was in high school. The quality of the band director has been high ever since he's been there. I've personally seen what he's done for all these years, and it is, it's just, it's a wonderful thing. The report I wanted to give to the councils of late, I've been involved in reviewing a number of police investigations in my office. I have to do that on occasion. The Police Department has been involved in a number of investigations where I've been looking at the reports. We've hired quite a few younger officers. I want to report to the council that we have, in my opinion, a top-notch group of officers who come in to work for the city. I'm working with these gentlemen in trials and court. These are persons who are thoughtful, intelligent, and gracious in their relations with the public. I watch these video cameras regularly. You would be dismayed at the difficult situations these officers confront on a weekly basis, the like of which will make the hair raise in the back of your neck when you watch some of these videos. And these are individuals who take the guff, respond sensibly on a regular basis in such a way that really, the only thing I can do is tell you, I look at these reports, I look at these videos, and I can tell you, we have a really, really fine police department. The investigations I've looked at in the last six weeks have been excellent, and I think you need to know that.
Thank you. Chief Baraducci, please, chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Greg. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
I just have a quick item, Mr. President. Just as a quick reminder to the community, if you're interested in land use development in the city, we have our Boards and Commissions Meeting Night this Thursday at, starting at 5:00 PM. That's for the Board of Zoning Appeals or Historic Preservation Board, Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission. We have something on each one that's just to the community if they're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick note. The Medina Rec wants to remind the community that on Friday, February 19th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, the Rec is hosting the Amazing Race Family Heart Health Challenge. This event has easy challenges which require you to work together as a whole family and is a great way to spend time together and have some fun. The event is free to MCRC members and only $10 per family for non-members and does require registration, which you can do at www.madinarec.org or at the Medina Rec Center front desk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. Just want to report, our Huntington Street Reconstruction Project is still underway. The underground work continues. The area is quite congested as it's adjacent to where Columbia Gas is also doing their pipeline replacement. We appreciate the public's cooperation with us during this time. I also want to report that as of this morning, both of our emergency connections to the Medina County Water System are completed. The one on Lake Road was completed a few weeks ago. This morning, we turned down the one on East Smith, so both of those projects are done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Monday, February 1st, here we Medina City Council hosted the Brunswick and Wadsworth City Council Administration. So I want to thank President Coin for getting that meeting together. It was a good meeting. Company by name of Optiva, Optiva, came and presented with a new concept in a waste mall. So we are proceeding with vetting this company for viability. There's some questions with respect to the operation, functionality, sustainability, as well as financing, and we look forward to the vetting process as we go forward. So there'll be more information as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of Mayor's appointments, we have two. We have the Medina County Combined General Health, Tom Jenkins, City Representative, term expiring March of 2017, and for the Board of Zoning Appeals, Brentalyn Maybaugh, alternate for term expiring 12/31/19. Move to approve the Mayor's appointments?
Second.
Discussion on the Mayor's appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the Mayor's appointments?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notices, Communications, and Petitions, there's none unfinished business, none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair and a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes, will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Erica?
Thank you, Mr. President. Erica Graffin, representing the Auditor's Office. I have a few reminders tonight. The first is that our real estate property taxes are due this Friday, the 12th. The second, complaints against the value of property, border revisions, are due postmarked by March 31st, and that's the same cycle as we've gone the last several years. Lastly, AARP is again located at the Auditor's Office this year to help seniors with tax preparation. That is a free service, and they need to schedule their appointments through the Office for Older Dots of Medina. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 1516 and ordinance amending section 94302A of the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to general regulations of municipal cemeteries. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
I believe I'll take that one, Mr. President. Thank you. For the past several years, in an effort to maximize the use of staff under the direction of the Parks and Recreation Director, we have cross-utilized the Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery personnel in that capacity. So this ordinance allows for the Parks Director to be appointed designee with respect to the current cemetery management. Going forward, I will still be involved as well as the Mayor and the Law Director with discussion in respect with, to distermines, deeds, and so forth as circumstances arise. So I appreciate the Law Director's help in drafting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll in ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordnance 1716 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 1916, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one easement necessary for the North Huntington Street Reconstruction Project. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As part of our project, we did need to acquire several easements. This is one of them, a small portion of property at the corner of Huntington.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilberg.
I will need to abstain on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk please call a roll in ordinance.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 1916 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 1816, ordinance authorizing expenditure of $64,021.59 to Emerger Tech, Inc., for the annual subscription fees and related expenses for the computer-aided dispatch and records management system for the Police Department. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Chief Baraducci.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the renewal of licenses for our dispatch software and records management system. About a half of this total is paid for by our partners in our agreements with them, being the Medina Life Support Team, Montville Township, and Medina Township.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk please call the roll.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordnance 1816 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 1916, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one easement necessary for the North Huntington Street Reconstruction Project. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As part of our project, we did need to acquire several easements. This is one of them, a small portion of property at the corner of Huntington.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilberg.
I will need to abstain on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? Clerk please call a roll in ordinance.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Abstain.
Ordnance 1916 passes 68 as one abstention.
Ordnance 2016, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one easement necessary for the 1097 Industrial Parkway Project. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As part of a project at 1097 Industrial Parkway, the property owner extended the city storm sewer. It's actually a benefit to the city, but we do need to acquire an easement so that we can maintain this going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call a roll in ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordnance 2016 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 2116, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2016 ADA Curb Ramp Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This is our annual CDBG ADA Curb Ramp Program. The one thing about this year is we bid last year's program later in the fall. We're not able to award a contract because there was an error in the bid, the low bid, so we, Border Control decided to reject all bids received. We will be bidding both of these programs together as one project, so there's no city contribution at all. The actual project, I believe, will end up being about $65,000 in grant funds, and we'll be able to do, I think it's 44 different curb ramps.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll in ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
No.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordnance 2216 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 2316, ordinance authorizing a payment of $26,175 to GenMet Construction LLC for the private home rehabilitation at 3556 Gerald Boulevard, Brunswick, as part of the fiscal year 2014 CHIP Grant Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Mendel.
Yes. I don't necessarily see a, an emergency clause.
It was added. Sandy Davis.
It was added? Okay, she talked to, okay, all right. So this is to pay for a residential rehab for property in Brunswick under our current CHIP program, which is the cooperative agreement between the City of Brunswick, City of Wadsworth, and City of Medina. We are the grant administrators, so we're the fiscal entity as well, so we have to issue this payment to, through the grant, to GenMet for the work done at 3556 Gerald Boulevard in Brunswick. Emergency clause is being requested to get this money paid to the contractor and issued to get this work, get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call a roll in the emergency clause.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 2316 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 2416, ordinance authorizing the clerk of court to solicit requests for proposals or RFPs for scanning and indexing of closed files for the Medina Municipal Court. Move to approve?[1547.83]
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-16 passes 7-0.
I guess here's the question, this came from the...
The bids were due back March 7th, so if they didn't have the emergency clause...
Oh, the bids are due back March 7th, so if the emergency clause was not added, the request for proposals bid opening would not occur because it'd be less than 30 days. But the... Where'd that timeframe come from?
It's in the...
I think it's in there. I mean, I know it's in there.
They're supposed to be a request for proposals that you're supposed to approve, and then you're supposed to get to the date.
So this isn't about the bid?
It's backwards.
They have the proposals come in? There's a date for the proposals to come in?
It says in the...
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and I guess we're gonna have to vote on the emergency clause since it's already been made a motion to second it. But the ordinance, if you recall, we had a discussion throughout the court project, and it says in conjunction with the court project, whether or not the court project occurred, and I guess it still would have to occur, about scanning in the old cases at the Medina Municipal Court throughout the years. And this goes back long-term to try to eliminate the physical files of the different cases, both civil and criminal, I believe, and digitize them into an easier format to retrieve. I guess some of the questions, once we get back to request for proposals, is determining what is happening now on an ongoing basis, because we should be scanning everything now so that at least there's a point in time where the scanning process has occurred and will cease from scanning old files. But I guess we'll submit the request for proposals to determine the costs that come back and determine if it's feasible in order to pay that cost, or if there's another avenue that we can take as a city to scan these files. So with that said, I guess I... Clerk please call the roll in the emergency clause.
Colasar?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Rose?
No.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
No.
Hilberg?
No.
Motion fails. Five nays, two yays.
Clerk please call the roll in the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
No.
Hilberg?
No.
Motion fails. Five nays, two yays.
Clerk please call the roll in the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
No.
Hilberg?
No.
Motion fails. Five nays, two yays.
Clerk please call the roll in the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-16 passes 68, one nay.
Ordinance 25-16, an ordinance amending section 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the intensive supervision probation employees for the municipal court.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance, this came before council, the last meeting, and this is an annual modification to the Salaries and Benefits Code based upon a grant for the intensive supervision probation employees. And this modification, I guess, needs to occur to the Salaries and Benefits Code since the grant takes effect from July to June of each year. So this emergency clause is requested just because this has been ongoing, but the grant does not come out until this time for some reason, it's very odd, but that's the way it works, I guess. Any further discussion on emergency clause or the ordinance? Clerk please call the roll in the emergency clause.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 28-16, ordinance amending ordinance number 16515, pass December 22nd, 2015. Carry forward.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the much discussed carry forward, excuse me. The healthcare has been removed, and what this is for people at home is if a department doesn't spend their appropriations in 15, we roll that extra appropriation over to 16. It's specifically for, example, if you have a major expenditure plan and you don't get to it in 15 or you're able to put it off. Sometimes you might have a plan to buy a truck, but the old truck is still plugging away. We don't take that money back away from you. It's rolled back into the next year so you can buy the truck the next year, for example. Healthcare has been removed, the 160 funds have been removed, and all of the 700, 800, and 900 funds, which are not included because they're agency funds, were just holding the money, but the rest of that is in here.
And also to clarify, I think the, don't get surprised by the number, because the number looks very large, but it also includes advances made, advances made by grants that have to be reimbursed yet by the grant funding from the federal government, so that's why the number looks so large. It's not as if there's a lot of money sitting in there that's being saved for projects. These are, some of the projects have already occurred, but we were waiting for some reimbursement from the grant programs that we were involved with. So that's the reason why the ending number of the carry forward looks so large, and we had the discussion about it at the finance meeting, but that's the reason why.